Welcome to Fairfax Candidate Night. My name is Morgan Hall and I'm President of the Fairfax Chamber of Commerce. And the Chamber is pleased to be able to co-host this evening's discussion with the Marin County League of Women Voters. I really like living in Fairfax. Fairfax has got a ton of character and it's got spirit, a real feisty spirit that I really like. Fairfax to me is a small town with big substance. The Fairfax Town Council exists to nurture and sustain Fairfax's special character. Without the thoughtful guidance of the Town Council, Fairfax risks losing these special qualities. As I look at these candidates up here before us this evening, I see seven competent and passionate individuals, individuals that are ready to give service to their community. As I think about what the lean times that lie ahead of us and I look at the candidates, I feel good about Fairfax's future. This evening, we're going to have a moderator that's going to help facilitate discussion. Our moderator does not live in Fairfax. It comes from far away and has no vested interest in the town of Fairfax or this evening's discussion. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce this evening's moderator, who's come here all the way from Mill Valley, California. Ladies and gentlemen, Ann Laser.
Yes, this is an opportunity for a Bostonian to be from the deep south. This is a first for us tonight, though I think this may be the fourth or fifth candidate's debate for Fairfax Council that I've ever moderated. But this is the first time that we are doing a taping. It's not called taping anymore. I'm trying to think of the correct verb. But we are digitizing this meeting with the staff from the new Community Media Center of Marin. And the debate will be cable cast. It will be available online, both video and podcast. So I'm very excited for this event. Because of the fact that we have seven candidates and we're all going to be exhausted at the end, I'm going to give my housekeeping details at the beginning. The first one is that Election Day is Tuesday, November 3rd. The last day to register in the November election is Monday, October 19th, 15 days before the election. Or if you've moved since the last time you voted, you have to re-register. Requests for absentee ballots must be received by the Elections Department by 5:00 PM Tuesday, October 27th, one week before the election. Early voting starts on Monday, October 5th, 29 days before the election. The polls will be open at the Elections Department in the Civic Center, Room 121. Most people aren't aware that you can actually start voting 29 days before the election in person. If you go to the league's smartvoter.org website and enter your street address and zip code, you will be able to see your own ballot with links to the candidates and issues and to information about the voting process itself. I don't think most of the candidates have put their information. I know one has put information up on SmartVoter, but pretty soon Annie will be calling you and nagging you to get your information up. And then you can go to SmartVoter and see what the candidates have to say about themselves. About the election in Fairfax, there are three vacancies, two incumbents, and seven candidates. So let's go. The first candidate who will make an opening statement of two minutes is Wendy Baker.
Hi, I'm Wendy Baker and I'm running for council because I love the town and I'm interested in the growth and change that's coming along that may affect our small-town character. I'm the one challenging candidate that has experience as a former mayor and council member. I've been behind the scenes, working with the town administrator on personnel issues and legal issues and balancing the budget. My professional background is in planning. I have a degree in landscape architecture from both Harvard and Berkeley. And my real passion is in that arena. There's a lot of projects coming along, the Albertson's parking lot, possibly the Country Club, some small-scale affordable housing projects. But I think with that passion, the next four years is really going to be spent looking at our fiscal crisis and the budget. We had to borrow from our reserves this year and we are going to lose some more money from the state this fall or December. And with the budget crisis, I think we need to really pull together as a team and as a community, make some hard decisions, build consensus, and really make some tough choices. My priority for the budget would be to preserve our safety services, police, roads, fire, emergency preparedness. I come to this position with a background in community service. I have a family history here and across the street is Reden Street, which was named after my family who were active here in the '30s. And I'd like to follow, excuse me, in their tradition.
Good evening and thank you for putting this event on. I'm Susan Brandborg and I'm running for reelection. My priorities are to keep Fairfax solvent, to keep public safety and infrastructure top priorities on our budget, and to make our downtown commercially viable while maintaining our small-town character. I have proven leadership. Before I was elected to the council, I was on the Park and Recreation Commission. And as Chair, I worked with parents who volunteered to renovate our playground with State Park Bond monies, and we completed the master plan. On the council, I've served as mayor four terms. I've served as President of the Ross Valley Fire Board, the President of the Marin County Council of Mayors and Council Members. I served on the Marin Community Foundation Partnership Committee. I served on the Marin County Childcare Commission. Currently, I'm serving as Representative of the MCC to the Disaster Council of Marin The biggest issue, I believe, is financial solvency for Fairfax. We have core services which we must provide. These services are fire and infrastructure and building and planning. Since 2006, our salaries in the budget have increased from 72% to now to 84% because of large raises given to some management. This is not sustainable. We need to go back and look at our salary schedules and to look at the manager's ability to give raises outside of the management MOU. Pam.
Hi, thank you all for coming tonight. It's always nice to see a good turnout. I'm Pam Hardwell-Herrero and this is my first go at running for Town Council. And I'm running because I feel like there are a number of really critical issues that we are going to be facing in the next four years. And I look forward to playing a role in making those decisions. My leadership experience in sustainability and nonprofit management, I think, will be crucial in making those tough decisions. I agree with my two former candidates here in that police and fire is an important issue. Something that I think is especially important is maintaining our local control and keeping our police and fire open and staffed 24/7. This is, I think, the most important piece of our budget item. I served with the American Red Cross as the Emergency Services Director, and having our police and fire is absolutely imperative for us to be prepared in case of an emergency. We are indeed in tough fiscal times. Borrowing $360,000 from our reserves is not something that we can repeatedly do. I'm committed to thinking outside the box and find creative ways to not only balance the budget, but grow. I think in the time that I've been the Executive Director at Sustainable Fairfax, even though it's been tough fiscal times, our budget has grown because we've found ways to make it work. And most importantly, we need to keep Fairfax Fairfax. We have homes that don't fill the lots. We have a vibrant, local downtown community. And we have been known for leading on progressive values. I will respect the integrity of our neighborhoods and our downtown community in any developments that are happening. David Weinsdorf was actually the first person to ask me to run, and then Larry Bragman, and then a number of other people in the community. This is not something that I ever thought I would do, but I've been honored and humbled by the requests, and I absolutely would be honored to serve in this position.
Chris Lang.
Welcome, everyone. Thanks for coming out. I have a flyer on the table. Welcome, everyone. Thanks for coming out. I have a flyer. On the back table. And I'd like to read a couple of things from it, just so you know where I stand. I'm running for Town Council because I love Fairfax and want to make it a better place to live, work, and play, raise a family, do business, and enjoy life. Please join me in bringing more mindfulness and compassion to the job of maintaining and improving our community. And then I have a couple of little slogans I want to read to you. One is, "No promises, just a solid track record of achievement and accomplishments. Let's work together to create opportunities for positive change." So it looks like Fairfax is slowly going broke, and so we have a problem. So we have to endorse, all the candidates are endorsing the renewal of the tax that we were told wasn't going to be needed to be renewed, but we need it. The council needs to facilitate more housing. We're under the gun from the state of California to provide one dwelling unit per month to facilitate such. The council has taken two years to approve one house, so that's problematic. We have to preserve our core services, as the other candidates all agree, police, fire, public works, and planning. But, in my opinion, status quo isn't that great, and all four departments could use some improvements, and I won't belabor the point. The top things for me are traffic calming and pedestrian and bicycle safety. We can do a lot more. Fairfax is a wonderful place. Downtown is like my living room, and I feel like I have this vision that comes from my heart. I have a plan. I'd like to share it with you, and I feel the council is a great place to do that. I've done a lot of work at the local schools, started the Bike Coalition, done a lot of volunteer community service over the years. And this is the ultimate extension of that community service, the last job I haven't done yet. So thank you for listening, and I hope you vote for me.
Bill Madsen.
I'd like to thank the League and the Chamber and everybody for coming tonight. You'll have to forgive me, my speechwriters just handed this to me, so I'm not very familiar with it. I'll be doing a lot of reading. My name's Bill Madsen. I'm running for Fairfax Town Council. I'm running because I believe we need a responsive council, a council that listens. The present council hasn't consistently shown they can. In my seven years on the Planning Commission, I always made it a point to listen and incorporate public comments into the decisions we made. I feel that if someone makes the effort to attend a meeting and has the courage to get up and speak at a meeting, they should see their opinion weighed and considered carefully, and I'm able to do that. The qualities I'll bring to the council are, I've worked on the Planning Commission, so I have a unique insight into the planning issues facing our town. I'm on the board of the Fairfax Chamber of Commerce, so I understand the challenges facing our business community. I'm in my fifth year on the Supervisory Committee of the San Francisco Fire Credit Union, a credit union with a half a billion dollars in assets. I understand budgets and spreadsheets, and I can make sure the tax funds you entrust to the council's care are used wisely. I'm a firefighter in San Francisco. I have been for 16 years. There's a unique aspect to firefighting that you won't find in any other job besides the smoke and the screaming, and that's this. When we're handed a job, we have to do it. There's nobody else to call, and if we don't do our job, people can die. This forces us to be resourceful and creative. We have a limited set of tools and a limited amount of time to work in, and we have situations that we can't possibly prepare for. We learn early on how to assess a situation quickly, determine what needs to be done, and then to do it. We problem-solve and we work as a team. I have a good head for numbers. I'm intimately acquainted with the issues facing our town. I have the relationships in town to make things happen, and I have the vision and the ability to cut through the fluff and get down to the heart of the matter. More than that, I'm a good listener. I'm approachable and easy to talk to. I'll be done in just a moment. And I'm easy to work with. I'm running because I believe our council isn't listening. I'm running because I will, I can, and I have listened.
Bill, did the stop sign go up?
Oh, are we not even counting? I'm sorry. Sorry. Thank you.
John Reed.
Hi, I'm John Reed, and I'm running for Fairfax Town Council because there's a number of important decisions that this next council will have to make. My experience as Chair of the Fairfax Volunteers with Safe Roots to School, as Vice Chair of the General Plan Advisory Committee, have prepared me to make these tough decisions in a way that's representative of the needs of our community. I helped start Safe Roots to Schools by spearheading the effort at Manor School with Wendy Callens. We've gotten over half the kids and their parents out of their cars and onto bikes and walking to school safely. It's a state program now because of what we started here in Fairfax, like a lot of things. I've been Chair of the Fairfax Volunteers for seven years now. We've done a number of different projects, including the annual townwide picnic, creek cleanup, clearing brush to reduce the fuel load in our fire-prone hills, and opening Fairfax's historic trail network so that people can get out in case of fire or just walk the town. I've worked for about 10 years with the General Plan Advisory Committee, charting a sustainable future for Fairfax and dealing with the important planning issues. During the '05 flood, I set up a headquarters where I directed over 120 volunteers to respond to the disaster. We went to help stores dig out, and we helped people with landslides that had ended up in their living rooms. It was really effective, and it brought people together. These were important projects, and I've completed them and brought them to a good conclusion. The Safe Roots to School projects have involved a lot of money, and they were brought in on time and on budget. I'll make sure Fairfax's projects are done right and on budget. One of the first things I did for Fairfax was solve a problem with Caltrans that has brought in over $2.5 million in public safety grants. I'll work to bring more money to our town. I guarantee you that I will continue to work as a council member, watching our budget and making things work. I promise to keep listening to our community and make the council work for you. A vote for me is a vote for having your voice heard and having the council work smoothly towards positive solutions for our future together. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm David Weinsdorf. It's been a great, a great privilege to serve as a member of your council over the last four years and this year as your mayor. These have been an extraordinary four years, from the great flood of 2005 through the current ongoing terrible economic distress that we all find ourselves in. But this council has governed wisely, and I think our town government has governed wisely. We have repaired the damage to our municipal buildings and infrastructure from the flood. We have put money aside so that we are able to work our way through this economic crisis as the state borrows our funds over the next few years. We will, as Californians, get through this, but we are governing wisely at the council level. We have canceled all raises. We have cut the budget by 4%. We have done the things in this town that everybody in this room is doing at their kitchen I think that the democracy that we have in this town is an extraordinary one. In the many years that I've had the opportunity to sit as a council member and as a candidate in two prior elections, I see up here a reflection of the kind of community in which we live. And I want to take a moment to single out each and every one of the candidates. And I also want to suggest to you that unlike other towns, no matter what choice you make in this upcoming election is a win for Fairfax. This is an extraordinary group. I am honored to serve with them this evening. I know that in the years to come, we will also all work together, as we are with the Chamber in many, many projects. And I also throw a little shout-out, mahalo, to the League for their work this evening.
Thank you. That ends the opening statements, and we will be moving on to the questions. I want you to look at the piles of questions that I have here. I organize them according to topic, and I don't think in all the years of my doing this, I've seen so many different topics. They don't cluster very well. And if I find that I cannot both call on the candidates and take care of the questions, I'm going to summon a League member who does not live in Fairfax to help me with the questions, and I'll just concentrate on keeping the candidates in order. I have three questions that I have been able to group that are of the same topic, and I'm going to read them all. I'm not going to change a word because I have found that voters have great pride of authorship in their questions and don't want to be edited. So let me read these three. What have you done for Fairfax in the last 10 years? What recent accomplishments of yours are you most proud of that you've done for Fairfax? And how does your work experience qualify you to make important decisions on the council concerning town business and satisfying the public's desires and expectations? You can choose which part of those you want to answer. We'll start with Susan Brandborg. And we'll keep moving like this in a clockwise way, changing who starts each time.
And one minute.
Yes, one-minute answers. Thank you.
As we talked about the flood a little earlier, last time I was elected, I was chosen to be mayor, and then within a month, we flooded. I convened the Disaster Council. I requested that our public safety, police, and fire do update to the emergency plan for Fairfax. I became trained in CERT, that's Community Emergency Training Response. And from there, going through a meeting with FEMA and all of the things that come about when you're in the midst of a flood. In the last 10 years, I'm very proud of the second renovation of the playground and also the fountain in the front of the town hall, which has the fish, which the children really love. We had a mandate to, or bequeathed to, make a fountain for children and for animals, and we were able to accomplish that. Thank you. Pam Hardwell-Herrero.
I feel like I've done a lot in the last five to 10 years. It's been very productive. Not only have I raised a wonderful daughter, who's here tonight, who's 12 years old. I had to do that. But I've been, in that time, I've served as the President of the Marin Master Gardeners for two and a half years as a volunteer, running that organization with 250 volunteers. And from that experience, took on the Executive Director position at Sustainable Fairfax. I was charged to build a board of directors and open the Sustainability Center, train volunteers, and get our programs up and running. And we've had absolutely the most fun and success with that that I can imagine in any job that I've ever had. We've ushered in Marin Clean Energy. We've dealt with issues of waste and the plastic bag ban, bringing that to the ballot with 80% of our voters agreeing with us. We have done, and we very recently really hit the issue of water, fighting against desalination and fighting for conservation and living sustainably with our resources.
Chris Lang.
What have I done for Fairfax in the last 10 years? Well, it did work. I was the lead volunteer in the flood benefit we had to help the merchants. I started the Marin County Bike Coalition here in Fairfax, created the Marin Bike Route Map, which has been a big service with my partners, Jim Jacobson and Joe Breeze. You know, I've gotten a lot of things done. I can't take all the credit. The trick is getting a good team together. I've worked on the Fairfax Festival, speaking of good teams. I've worked on the festival for 30 years, so that's longer than 10. The last three years, four years, I've worked at the Chamber of Commerce and taken it from an organization that couldn't get a quorum. The ladies who ran it before did a great job, but they got a little burnt out, so we got some fresh blood in there. And now we've got some good, solid projects coming down the pike. The thing I'm most proud of is our new Welcome to Fairfax sign. We finally got something done over there. It's catty corn to the good earth. And my work experience, I've been a self-employed gardener and landscape contractor for 40 years, so I know how to do it.
Bill Madsen.
On my opening speech, I was trying to get to all that. So I'm just kind of continuing that right now. I did work on the Planning Commission for seven years. There were a lot of projects we worked on. We drafted the FAR with the Design Review Board, and that's the Flora ratio, which keeps house sizes moderate. We worked on most elements of the general plan. I have an intimate knowledge of the general plan, and we, as a body, on the Planning Commission, we made sustainability the cornerstone of the general plan so that that means that everything that goes forward in the town is built on the sustainability as a model. I was on, most recently, I was on the Body and Soul Subcommittee for the Body and Soul Festival here in Fairfax. I've done a lot of things on the Chamber of Commerce, working with Chris. I've coached soccer, worked on the G-PAC, been involved on many different levels. I think I'm intimate with how the town works and what's going on in town, and I hope I can continue doing that on the council. Thank you.
John Reed.
Yeah, the last 10 years have been interesting and productive. I've enjoyed working, doing a lot of things for the town. Let me see, I started, helped start Safe Roots to School at Manor, which I mentioned in my early speech. I've been with the Fairfax Volunteers. I've done a bunch of different projects. One of the ones that I think makes a lot of sense and I'm proud of is opening up the trail network in Fairfax. And this is this historic trail network of 100 trails that not only do they help people get out in fires, but it's nice to use them to get around in town. We've also done a chipper project, which helps reduce the fire danger significantly at very little cost to the town, actually, no cost to the town. I've been on G-PAC the whole time over the last 10 years, and that's pretty good. My work experience, I used to work in the film industry, doing, I supervised departments with budgets and brought things on time and on budget, and I'm organized. I'm good, and I got stopped. So thanks.
David Weinsdorf.
Yeah, as, it was the first month of being on the council when the flood hit, and it's a call you don't want to receive at 4:00 in the morning on your first month as a council member. And I remember going down to Town Hall, which was flooded up to the fire department, and I want to note Susan's very competent stewardship that morning and the days that passed, and it's a reflection of the experience that you have to have when you are charged with the responsibilities of governing all of us. I think the one thing that I would call out to suggest what has been particularly effective over the last four years of the council is the fact that we, despite our differences and our robust discussions, for the most part, we are a respectful and a civil group of five. And that has resulted in our town being particularly well-governed in those last couple of seconds, 13 years, Planning Commission, Open Space Committee, council, and, in my limitless free time, the Fairfax Documentary Film Festival.
Wendy Baker.
I think you asked sort of a two-part question, and one of them had to do with business experience, so I'll try to answer both within one minute. A lot of the projects that I worked on in Fairfax still have effect today. And in fact, I've been looking at the redwood trees downtown that I helped plant along with a committee called the Greening Committee, and they're really quite huge. And it's kind of embarrassing to see how big these trees are, knowing that I was involved with planting them. We also raised money to plant these trees. We put sycamores along Sir Francis Drake. And as I say, those kinds of projects and the plaza steps that I worked on, Frank Egger decided to call it the Fairfax Station. These are permanent changes that I think are still benefiting us today. And my background as a planner and a grant writer... And my background as a planner and a grant writer, I think really fit well with what's needed on the council.
Mine went off, okay. I have three cards here on the subject of the Fire Department and Police Department. Two of them are short, and one of them is quite long. I forgot to tell the audience that neatness counts on these questions. I think I can read it, though. There has been a lot of talk over the years about consolidation of Police Department with Fairfax and San Anselmo. And do you have a position on this? Then another, are you in support of consolidating our fire and police services with San Anselmo? And then here's the long one. Fairfax currently pays 30.4% of the cost of the Ross Valley Fire Department. San Anselmo pays 69.6%, a portion of which approximately 14% is paid by Sleepy Hollow. Sleepy Hollow is a non-voting member of the Ross Valley Fire Department Board. The Board is recommending that Sleepy Hollow's membership be upgraded to full voting membership in exchange for an increased contribution from Sleepy Hollow to 16.7% at no additional cost to Fairfax. Do you support this recommendation? And Pam, I'm giving you that first crack at that. I indicated to the candidates that if they feel that a minute is not enough and they need to go a second round, they just indicate it to me, and if the other candidates seem to agree, then we'll, if we need to, do a second round on complicated questions. So go ahead, Pam.
Thank you. I'm in the hot seat. All right. I'm against consolidation. I think that we've tried, we've looked at consolidation in the past, and the council has made the wise decision to not consolidate. What my understanding is, is that we've found time and time again is that we want to keep local control of our police and fire. The police and fire of San Anselmo are paid higher salaries. They cover a larger jurisdiction. Were we to consolidate, we would cover an even larger jurisdiction, and that I feel like having our police and fire open and staffed 24/7 is of the utmost importance. As for the Sleepy Hollow issue, really quickly, that sounds very interesting. It's not something that I have looked into fully, and I would certainly look into that and see what the ramifications were with that and make a decision.
Thank you. Chris Lang.
My policy on the Planning Commission was not to make a decision until all the facts had been presented by staff, then take public testimony, ask questions, and then make a decision after that. So I don't prejudge my position. As far as consolidation of police with San Anselmo goes, from the information that I have, I'm not for it, because I see a lot of brass down at San Anselmo in the office, and I don't think Fairfax can afford that, because I think it's just going to cost us more. And I am totally in favor of local control, but I would like Fairfax Police Department to not use 40% of our budget and to be more community policing and more friendly. One of the reasons I'm running. The shout-out to my friend, Joel Hill. Consolidate police and fire, I don't think we're going to go there. As far as the Sleepy Hollow vote goes, like I said, I can't prejudge my decision without having all the facts. And I understand the philosophy that Fairfax doesn't want to be outgunned or outvoted or dominated by the San Anselmo-Sleepy Hollow clique. So I understand that, but I think we need to be fair. If they're paying, they need to have a say. Thank you.
Bill Madsen.
Thank you. I believe that we can have local control and still merge the police departments. We have local control of our Fire Department. It's the Ross Valley JPA, and that's, as the other question says, San Anselmo, Fairfax, and Sleepy Hollow. The numbers on that add up to 117%. So I don't know exactly what their question is. If we set up a JPA like we have with the Ross Valley Fire Authority, we could have Ross Valley Police Authority. San Anselmo shouldn't have control. Right now, the reason we rejected the proposal last time is they wanted to maintain control of the Police Department and just sell us their services. We need to have an independent body where we have a vote on the Board like we do on the Fire Authority. We could also bring in Sleepy Hollow and the Oak Manor area and get extra money from the county that's being paid for sheriff services and actually make a profit on the police or something like that. Thank you.
John Reed.
Yeah, I think the consolidation of police does not make sense for Fairfax, and here's why. Pam mentioned that the size of jurisdictions of police forces and the salaries of police are tied to the size of the force. And if we consolidated with San Anselmo, our police force, which, you know, we get a lot of rookies because, you know, we don't pay that much, and so it starts out that way. If we combined with them, our level would go up to their level, so that money that we would save, one position, the chiefs, would largely get used up in the first couple of years as those salaries went up. The other reason why it's a bad idea is because San Anselmo insists on the station being there. They close at 8:00. We have a lot of bars. Stuff happens at night here, and there's a reason why people voted 2/3rds for that station to remain open 24/7. So thanks.
David Weinshoff.
Yeah, fires, schools, parking wrecks, some of our public works, it's all consolidated at this point. It's a difficult subject, but very briefly, I believe we should do one final comprehensive study, and then the analysis should be presented to all of the people in Fairfax, and they should have a vote on it, up or down, not a council decision, a decision of all 5,000 adults. On the issue of Sleepy Hollow, yeah, we should bring them in, give them an equal vote on one condition. They're sitting on over $2 million in the bank in unspent funds. As all of us know, we're sitting beneath hundreds and hundreds of acres of grasslands and timber that haven't burnt in the lifetime of anybody on Earth. If they, if we bring them in as equal members, after a short period of time, they have to release that funds for public safety improvements addressed directly to the fire service.
Sorry. Wendy.
Yeah, I tend to agree with David that this is something that might have to go to a vote. It's a very sensitive topic. The community would like to have its own police station. I think it's part of a thriving local community where you have access to your station 24/7. And I think that reports that have been done are inconclusive. There's startup costs that have to be taken into account. There's salaries that would have to be leveled, like John was saying. As far as Sleepy Hollow, I spoke to one of the captains the other day, and apparently those discussions have been at loggerheads for so long that they've sort of taken it off the table. So I'll leave that to Susan, because I think she's on their board.
Okay. All right, Susan.
I just want to clarify something. Bill said that the reason why those numbers go over 100% is because Sleepy Hollow pays a part of the costs right now of the labor. So that's why that doesn't add up to 100%. Okay. Sat on the council Subcommittee with San Anselmo for almost two years. We had two studies done. I'm going to be really fast, because I only have a minute and 30 seconds, and what ended up, we were looking at consolidation of dispatch, and before we met again, we had a contract handed to us. A contract is not a JPA. You have no control over a contract. If we have any kind of consolidation, we have to have equal representation. There was a lot of questions in that. I mean, Sleepy Hollow.
Yeah.
I'm good. I don't have to go there.
You're going to have to go. Do you want to do a second round on this? No, okay, move on. I do have a cluster here of three questions on Measure I. First one, Measure F was passed with the promise of fiscal responsibility over the last four years. Many raises have been given, including an $18,000 a year raise. How will you bring fiscal responsibility to our town if Measure I passes? Do you have an alternative proposal other than renewing Measure I? And to those candidates who assert the town is in good financial shape, how then can you justify the need for Measure I? And we start with Chris Lang.
We'll go in reverse order. So I said Fairfax is going broke slowly. So I appreciate the fact that council has a balanced budget, and I commend them for that. But I have issues with other aspects of governance in Fairfax. To me, the budget is not the most important thing. I endorse Measure I because last time the tax came up, I endorsed it because I was just tired of people saying, oh, we can't do that because we don't have the money. So I said, okay, how about you just do your job, okay? Whatever it takes, I don't care anymore. I just want to get stuff done, and that's where I stand now. An alternative proposal for keeping the town and government afloat? I think the cuts would be so deep, I don't think that we need to go there just yet. I think, why not just renew the tax and keep working on fiscal responsibility? I think the council has been fairly fiscally responsible. I mean, the raises for staff, we'd have professional staff, we have a good town manager now. We thought we were going to get retention. We didn't have retention. Okay, we learned. I don't think we should keep raising salaries, for sure. And that's it. I do endorse Measure I for that reason.
Bill Madsen.
All right. We're talking about a balanced budget, but from my numbers with, we're counting on the Measure F and the Measure I, and that's $465,000 a year. And we're also counting, we borrowed $360,000 from our reserves this year, so that makes $825,000. We're not a balanced budget. We need $825,000 to make this budget work. We absolutely need this $465,000 every year. And the only way to find a solution to these tax measures is to consider police consolidation or, you know, cut staff. And we don't, we don't have to, yes, the police would get some raises. It would be good for them if we merged the departments, which means we'd have retention. We wouldn't lose guys after three years. You only see the guys for three years now. We would be able to keep the station open for 24 hours. We would keep it manned for 24 hours, and we would maintain control. We can't, we can't lose control. I agree, we can't afford to lose control, but we can't afford to spend all this money either. Thank you.
Okay, John Reed.
Yeah. Well, Measure I, there's a lot of, everybody knows about the state budget right now, and that's one of the reasons why Fairfax is in a hard place. We don't know exactly how much money the state is going to take. We know how much they're starting to take, 8% of our property tax, which is a lot of Measure I is going to raise some money that's going to help us float and, you know, reduce the amount that Fairfax is trying to borrow. If it doesn't pass, we're really in a rock and a hard place. If it does pass, we've still got to save costs. One of the things that I have experienced as volunteer chair is that there's a lot of good people in Fairfax that know how to do a lot of things. And yeah, there's probably going to be jobs that don't go filled, just as they are now in Public Works and the Police Department, to save money, and we can pull together as a community, I believe, and solve this problem and get through the next three years.
David Weinshoff.
Yeah, in our Prop 13 world, Measure I, Measure F, it's now part of our fiscal fabric. It's not going away this year, and it's not going to go away ever. It will be much like that $50 municipal service tax that looks so quaint and cute for its small number as one of the 14 add-ons on the tax bill that we got last week. As for the raises, I think it's very important to recognize that until those raises were instituted, our employees, the bedrock of our town, the people who do the work for us, were so underpaid, they couldn't see the taillights of the cars of their colleagues in front of them. And now they are merely woefully underpaid. They will not be getting any raises this year or for the foreseeable future. But it was critical, like any other employee, that they be paid a good, solid wage to get good, solid people that would stay with us for a good bit of time. And I think on balance, I think we have put together a fine, fine staff.
Wendy Baker.
Well, I agree that continuing the tax is important. I think we've sort of boxed ourselves in. One of the cuts we might be facing is paramedic calls is, takes up the majority of our calls to the department. And one of the cuts, I was reading about this, the potential, is to lose two staff in the Fire Department, and one would be a paramedic. I think we have to focus on safety services. Safety was one of the key needs that was put on the table at the time that this measure was first passed, and it isn't a new tax, it's something that we would be continuing.
Susan Brandberg.
Yes, I'm supporting Measure I because of the state takeaways. I don't agree with David on the fact that giving high salaries retained employees, in fact, we found the opposite to be true. And we also found that there were some loyal employees that have been with us for many years who were not getting the raises like the new people were. So there's a little disjointedness in that. The council, for information, whoever said we don't have a balanced budget, we cannot go, we cannot not have a balanced budget. It's state law that the cities have to have balanced budgets. Am I still have time?
Oh, okay. So the, now I lost my train of thought. I'm sorry, I'll pass. Save some time. I can give you a few extra seconds if you think of what you wanted to say. Okay, Pam HH.
That is often how my name is abbreviated. Makes it a lot easier. Absolutely, I think Measure I needs to pass in order for it to keep us our services. I believe the really interesting part of that question was about how are we going to bring revenue? And I think we have some underperforming assets in town, primarily the Albertsons lot, and I think that that needs to be developed in a very sustainable and very careful way to create maybe a tech sector or a business sector of sorts that can bring more revenue into our town. I also feel like there is cost savings that we can take advantage of by utilizing Marin Clean Energy and AB 811 to bring energy efficiency and local power generation to our town. This will not only end up saving us money in even the short run, but it will also give us an opportunity to bring more revenue in and provide clean and renewable energy for our town.
All right. Can the youth center be discontinued in order to save money? And we'll start with Bill Madsen.
No, it shouldn't be. It shouldn't be discontinued. We have means of making money. I'd like to go back to, they call it a balanced budget, but it's built on a temporary tax measure, a tax measure that was meant to be temporary, was only supposed to last for five years. It has nine months left, and now David's telling us it's going to last forever. That's $125 a year. Some people say it's not that much, but if you're spending $125 a year on your tax bill, you're less likely to vote for something else. It might be good for the town if you wanted to restore the pavilion, if you wanted to purchase the wall property, keep it as open space. You need money to do that, and we don't have that money right now. They're talking about closing the youth center. They're talking about cutting fire and paramedics. We can't afford to do that. There are options available to us, but we have to make tough decisions, and we have to pursue those options. Thank you.
John Reed.
Anne, I remembered what I wanted to say.
All right.
The town council.
15 seconds.
The town council cannot say that we're going to get rid of two fire people. There's a fire board, and we have representatives of, from our town council as well as San Anselmo Town Council, and they make those decisions, so not the town council.
All right. Okay, now back to John Reed.
Okay, and I believe it was the youth center. Well, or at least the youth program. Was it the program or the center?
Actually, the youth, the phrasing of it is can the youth center be discontinued in order to save money?
Okay. Well, the youth center itself is a building that was built with federal money as a community center. So in terms of that, I don't think it really can be something else. The youth program, I think, is really important, because I think our youth are really important. They are the future citizens, I mean, they are citizens now, but they're the future voting citizens, put it that way, future adults that our community is made of. I think it really takes, whatever, a village to make a child, to quote a, you know, frame this, the phrase that's been around a while. And right now, I mean, yes, the grant that was funding the previous program there did run out a few weeks ago, but already there are a number of volunteers who are coming forward to help a person who is being paid to basically provide a is being paid to basically provide a program for our youth. It's wider than just some problem teens now. It's all the way from preschool up to teenagers. Thank you.
David Weinshoff.
Yeah, John's correct about the, the youth center. It can't be closed. On the youth program, I sit on the Board of Community Action Marine, which actually was funding the program. But most importantly, when they decided no longer to continue the funding of the program, the money is, is money that we decided on from Measure F, $18,000 a year. That doesn't go away. And the same with Measure I, it's going to be $18,000. The money for the youth isn't going to go away, it's just going to be rechanneled into other interesting programs. And both Lou and Mary Ann have established excellent youth programs. Other members of the council, present and future, will also come up with excellent projects. It seems to be a universal thing, that although we can discuss many matters, we come together on the issues of our youth. And I have no doubt that when the new council gets impaneled, we'll pick up on the thread that we have 18 bills sitting around, and we'll begin to expend that wisely on behalf of the kids in Fairfax.
Wendy Baker.
Yeah, I'm really concerned about this issue because I was a single parent for years, and at one point, we did have an after-school center there that I helped found. It was called Perry Park After School. And, but I have been looking at the programs that we have going today. We have a parent program, we have art with young children, we do have some after-school, well, we did have after-school, I think we just closed it. But what I'm finding out is that there isn't a very large population being served. Some programs have six or 10 people, I think one might have 20. So I do think it's one of those areas where we really have to look at how many people are being served, and are we reaching the right population? Is this maybe a place where we should share services with San Anselmo? But it is set aside, there is money set aside in the new measure, and there was in the last one. So this is an area that I think needs to be worked on.
All right. The next, Pam H.H.?
I think it's me.
Oh, Susan. Right, thank you.
Over the years, we've had a number of manifestations of youth programs in that building. First of all, it wasn't built with federal funds, it was a private residence, I think it was a duplex, that somehow the town acquired. And we call it the youth center. Right now, it's being utilized by the volunteer, volunteer park and rec coordinator and finance department. And it'll be, the front part will be used for the focus, is that what it's called? I think the $18,000 is not going to provide us with any kind of program that would be viable. But I think we need to look at sharing with San Anselmo, or going out to bid and offering the $18,000 as an adjunct to somebody coming in and putting a program on, professional people. Thank you.
Okay, now Pam Hartwell-Herrero.
Thank you. I agree, I believe with everyone, that our youth programs should not be cut. This is actually an area where consolidation with San Anselmo has worked really beautifully. I took part in the Camp Earth program, that was a San Anselmo Fairfax Park and Rec collaboration this year, and toured about 50 kids through the Sustainability Center, and it was an absolutely wonderful program. I've talked to the woman who's running the focus program that's coming up. If any of you have been to a farmer's market lately, you have probably noticed that we are in the middle of a baby boom in Fairfax. And I believe that it is absolutely imperative that we provide programs and a space for the children and youth in our community, from the youngest toddlers to the most troubled teens. And I think the youth center and its programs are absolutely imperative for that.
Okay. And where am I?
Chris.
Chris Lang.
From being the lead volunteer at Painting Manor School, thanks to Deb Castle, to the projects at White Hill School, thanks to Mel Meisner who's here, Deb Gillum, Jack Wise, Scott Hawstrasser, I've gotten a lot of projects done for the kids. I served in Fairfax Park and Rec, did kid programs. And the creation of the Safe Fastest Schools program was under my aegis as founder and president of the Marin County Bike Coalition, thanks to Patrick Seidler and Deb Hubsmith. My latest kid work that I'm doing now is coming up this Sunday, the San Anselmo Kids Bike Race, 9:00 a.m. at Memorial Park. There's a flyer on the table back there, if you know anyone ages five through 12 who might be interested. I think the question about the youth center is philosophically, no, we don't want to close, stop the program. Logistically, I think the question must be asked, how many children are served? I know that a lot of children are at the Fairfax farmer's market, but they seem to all have parents. And, you know, when I was a kid, we didn't have any after-school programs. And so there you have it. We'll have to ask that question. I'm not going to prejudge my response.
All right. Two questions that are similar. If elected, what would you do to support local businesses? And the other, what have you done to support local businesses? And we start with John Reed.
Okay. Well, what have I done? I've, well, the first part was, what will I do, or something? I think it's important to think creatively about what's going to increase revenue for businesses. I mean, part of it is providing the sorts of goods and services that people in Fairfax want to buy. And that's, you know, an interesting nut to crack, especially because, you know, sometimes retail has a problem in the daytime in Fairfax because people don't spend a lot of money who live in Fairfax. But I think that we can make use of a lot of the people who do come to Fairfax and park their car and ride their bikes somewhere else, and then come back to their car and drive away. That's a big revenue source. There's revenue sources that we can develop with other people outside of Fairfax by having festivals and things like that. And I think we need to think about how to make Fairfax more attractive, and for people to come here and patronize our businesses. And also, let me see, what I have done is worked with a lot of people to try to solve their individual problems. Thank you.
David Weinshoff.
This is a real dilemma for the downtown business community. If you look at the tax rolls, we're pretty much even on sales tax. So the business community, or at least part of it, is surviving and working its way through the current economic troubles. The council, I think, has focused a lot on the downtown. We convened a business summit, and we are in the process of implementing the, some of the ideas that were, that came out of that. I also think the major thing that you're going to see when we finally get it off the ground is there's going to be a downtown on Bellinas Road revitalization. We've got about half the funding that we need right now. We have to do a little more charrette work to bring in the bicycle community for discussion. But I would be hopeful over the next year or two that you're going to see from Elsie to Broadway, an entire revamping of Broadway with larger sidewalks, bulb-outs, street furniture. And it is my hope that that kind of work and that kind of investment by the town will result in an even more vigorous core downtown community.
Wendy Baker.
I think that's one of the projects that I want to address if I do get elected, because Bellinas Road is a very sensitive, small-scale street. And I think the changes that we make to it, we have to honor the fact that there are merchants there that are dependent on parking. If we take parking away, we're hurting the business community and hurting the merchants, and we have to replace that parking. We do want to continue to encourage, I think, outdoor seating and areas to relax, and shade trees, and this kind of thing. But the plan, I believe, as it's put forth, is not providing shade trees, it's providing a kind of decoration. And I think that it's just really important to go slowly on these changes. We want to watch overruns when we spend money for capital projects. But basically, I think we need to shop locally. The best way we can help our business district is to use our businesses.
Susan Brandbark.
What have I done for local businesses? Businesses. Well, I started one. And I've worked in, in retail on Bellinas Road, and I'll tell you, it takes a great effort to keep a business thriving. But we have some businesses that have been here for a very long time and are thriving. And how do we keep retail? Well, we keep retail if we keep shops retail, and we don't allow service, services to go in where retail is. You need a flow of retail so that people will continue on down the street. I agree wholeheartedly. In fact, I've been told by the merchants that we do not want parking taken off of Bellinas Road. We do need a wider sidewalk for safety and for trans, and I think that's very important. And David mentioned the business summit. I think we do have to shop locally and support our merchants wherever we can. Thank you.
Okay. Pam H.H.
So what I've done is worked through Sustainable Fairfax to bring the Green Business Certification Program to some of our businesses through a chamber mixer at Fairfax Lumber, which was very successful. I think that the Green Business Certification Program has an added benefit of drawing people into Fairfax and soliciting, you know, a way for the businesses to advertise that they are following those progressive values. I also created a survey. We get a lot of interns at Sustainable Fairfax, and one of the easiest and first things that I do with them is send them out into the community with a sort of localization survey. And in that survey, they ask questions like, "Do you think about where you buy your things? Do you go out of your way to support your local businesses? And if there's anything that you want to buy in Fairfax that you can't find, what is it?" And then we take the responses from those surveys, and we go to our local businesses. One of our successes on that was rainwater harvesting tanks. It's something we've done a lot of education on. And we went to Augie at Fairfax Lumber, and we said, "Hey, Augie, if you carry these tanks, I promise people will buy them." And he's carrying them, and they absolutely have. So I think ways to find that. And then again, I don't have time.
Chris Lang.
This is a huge question for me. If elected, what will you do to support local businesses? Number one, I would work on flood prevention. The pipe under Town Hall, when it overfilled, it wiped out merchants downstream. And that, nothing's been done, and so we need to take some leadership on that. Also, the Chamber's unofficial policy has been no net loss of parking. And I submitted an extra bike parking proposal to the town, and there was no response. So that's another thing I'd like to address. Traffic calming is super important, it would help our town. And I'm not making much headway there, which is why I'm running for council, and also more crosswalks. What have I done? I helped run the flood benefit, reinvigorated the chamber board, made Fairfax more attractive with our plantings and bike rack installation, created the Economic Sustainability Plan with the town of Fairfax, created with Morgan Hall's leadership, the Bellinas Road bulbout plan. And the prejudicial comments about having to have larger sidewalks there means there would be no space left for bicycles on one of the busiest roads in our town. So this is the kind of thing that I'm up against. And that's it. We tried to get some shade trees and bike racks, it's just tough. If I'm on the council, then I could do it.
Bill Madsen.
Yeah. I'd continue what I have been doing, working with the Chamber of Commerce. We've been working on, to make, to make the Fairfax downtown a destination. We, we have a goal of monthly events or festivals to draw people to the town, to get them to recognize what a great destination this is for shopping. I agree with John that we need to work on beautification projects. It's funny, David says we have revitalization money, we have half the money, he says. That means that we have grants for half the money, and the town has to come up with the other half, which means we don't have any money to work on those projects. And once again, that goes back to the budget. We need to find ways to save money. If we have money, we can, we can make the downtown a more attractive place, a place to draw people in to come to our businesses. But we have to find ways to save money to be able to do that. Thank you.
The next question is, what is your position on the MCE, the Marin County Energy Authority? And David, I'm going to give you an extra 30 seconds or so to tell the voters what the MCE is.
Marin Clean Energy, although we really should give it to Pam. The Marin Clean Energy, it's going to change the paradigm. It's going to change the way that we in the county produce and use energy. And low be it PG&E, I'm sorry, Lou, to stand in the way of this. It is a way that we begin to look at power not coming from our PG&E source, but rather local sources. And also, of course, the most important thing is that it's from renewable sources in large measure. And that's the change that Fairfax advocated unanimously on its council, and then when Councilman Bragman brought forth a resolution condemning PG&E for its rogue attempt, if you will, to sidetrack this through an initiative. I think I said at the council that they're on the wrong side of history. They are on the wrong side of history. There is going to be a new paradigm, a new change in the way that energy is produced in this country, in this state, and for Fairfax. And it's very heartening to be on a council that spearheaded this and has been recognized. For the most part, I think you're going to see great tumult over the next couple of months. But at the end of the day, Fairfax will be recognized for its leadership in this critical, essential issue.
Thank you, David. Well done. All right, Wendy Baker.
Yeah, I think a lot of the county is behind the Marin Clean Energy proposal. I think it's a creative plan, the fact that it is involving PG&E as a distributor. I think bringing the innovative, new energy sources together with an existing distributor makes a lot of sense. And I think I'll turn it over to Pam also.
Susan Brandbark.
Yes, I agreed to go forward with Marin Clean Energy because we were going to have a second chance to look at what we were actually going to be charged for green or super green. And I have a lot of questions about what the liability would be for the town of Fairfax. Somebody mentioned it's a local source of energy. Actually, it isn't a local source of energy. The, I don't know if you remember the rancher out in West Marin who wanted to put in a windmill. It took him several years, and he had to get it down to a certain size before he could even get it. So we don't have a local source of clean energy to put over the grid with PG&E at this time.
Okay, Pam.
Thank you. As you may have guessed, this has been a passion of mine for a while. It was actually one of the first things that I worked on with Sustainable Fairfax. And it's really about, right now, it's really, there are three pieces to Marin Clean Energy. It's about aggregated buying. And right now, the, the energy that we purchase is by no means local. It's, it has to come from outside sources because we don't have local power generation. But the second piece of the plan is funding local power generation through solar bonds. Solar is much less impactful and much less controversial than wind, and it will be something that we'll be able to do on potentially the businesses in Fairfax, like we've got on the Pavilion, and we've got on the Fairfax Theater. And it allows for sort of bonds that are, that are, that are brought forward in order to purchase that generation. And then there's also mandates in Marin Clean Energy for energy efficiency programs. And this is what really allows us to take money that is actually mandated through the PG&E ratepayers, for PG&E has to pay for these programs. And those programs will allow us to save dramatically on, on costs. And I think that Marin Clean Energy, combined with the Burst Program and with AB 811, will absolutely have a major impact on how we play a role in climate change. And Fairfax has been a leader, and I hope that we will continue to be a leader.
Chris Lang.
I remember talking to a guy a couple of years ago about this. I forget his name. He's still involved. Real interested in this since I was a friend of the earth in 1971, fighting off nuclear power plants. Nothing changes. Sometimes seems like that. Climate change is really important, and our lifestyle is creating climate change. And I'm outside all day, every day, and I can feel it, and I don't like it. So I'm going to do my best to promote bicycling. On the town council, making a choice for Marin Clean Energy is a no-brainer. A few years ago, I put my money where my mouth was, and had that green mountain energy, whatever, it cost more, but it was worth it. So I'm totally in favor of that. Fuel, local fuel reduction in the hillsides, we could run a boiler with that stuff and burn it down here. We could have solar cells on all the flat roofs in town. We could actually have some windmills. And the fire department could even make their own biodiesel. I know a guy that makes it in his driveway, and he's a fireman, for his huge diesel truck that he drives to San Francisco every day. So I think between what we can do here, this is a pet dream of mine, what we can do here, and this aggregate buying and stuff, well, it's a good, a good idea, a good investment.
Bill Madsen.
I'm for burning coal. I think we're all in agreement that clean energy is, is the only way to have a sustainable future. I like that these aggregations give clean energy providers a chance to be competitive and, and establish themselves in the market. I don't think there's anything more that needs to be said on that. Thank you.
John Reed.
Okay. I think Marin Clean Energy is a great idea. I think we all need to think about our energy future and where our power comes from, and where our energy use comes from, and how much we use, and more than energy. It's like how much garbage we buy and then come, and then throw back into landfill. I, you say, "What have you done for Fairfax?" I've had- I've had solar panels on my roof now for a number of years, and I can tell you, our electric bill last year was eight bucks, okay? Now, the panels have to be paid off, and we estimate that it'll be, whatever, eight or nine years or something like that into the life of them, which is expected to be 25 or 30 years before that breaks even. But it's a good idea, and I think we need to start enabling power to be produced reasonably locally. I think one thing this bill will do will establish a market for clean energy, which allows a farmer to get a loan to put in something that generates electricity, for instance. Thank you.
The next question, a combined question. What can Fairfax do to further promote safe alternative transport, e.g., cycling, public transit, carpooling for residents and commuters? And then the other one, Fairfax has done a lot for bicyclists by painting bike lanes and having share-the-road checkpoints. If elected, what will you do to make Fairfax more pedestrian-friendly and disabled-friendly? And Wendy, we start with you. Wendy Baker?
Okay, yeah, we are coming through a period where we've completed a lot of work, and I think John Reed gets a lot of credit for that, with the Safety to Schools programs and crosswalks and bike lanes. And I would think that the pedestrian part of that is helpful and will be more helpful as, you know, people learn about it. I think bicycle etiquette, which is something Chris knows a lot about, is a big thing. The more bicycles we have, the more colorful it is and wonderful it is for the aliveness of our community and its healthy recreation. But there is a clash going on from time to time with pedestrians, and I think it's education and having the different groups work together. And especially, I would say, older people from the Bennett House, our senior house, are, you know, avoiding going to some areas because they feel it's overcrowded.
Okay, Susan Brandburg.
Yes, alternate transportation. There has been several alternates that were, there was the little stage-like bus that we had paid for by the county that went between Fairfax and San and Selmo, and that sort of died a real quick death. No one took advantage of it. Could have been the schedule, could have been whatever. Fairfax really cannot provide transportation. And I agree with Wendy that the component of the sidewalk and the pedestrian needs to be paid attention to. We really need to keep our crosswalks painted, and people need to pay attention, particularly bicyclists, to not go through stop signs while you're in the crosswalk. And so I'm not sure how the educational component of that will work since the county's trying to do it, and it's not working too well.
Okay, Pam.
Lot to say on this one. Yeah, I think the casual carpool is something that we should seriously look at. We've become very much a commuter community. For a large percentage of the people who live here do indeed work in the city. My husband's one of them. And he carpools with about, you know, three or four other folk, and it works really well. Casual carpool has been put into place in the East Bay, and I think it should be put into place in the North Bay. And I think that Fairfax would be a great place for that to start. Absolutely more crosswalks, more bike safety, more bike safety for the kids, and making it fun and modeling and fun for the adults. I mean, one of the programs that Sustainable Fairfax worked with, Renee Goddard, who was the Safe Routes to School Coordinator for Manor School, was our Lorax signs, which I'm sure some people loved and some people didn't. But it was an opportunity right around the time that school started to bring awareness to the fact that kids are riding their bikes to school in unprecedented numbers, and that's a wonderful thing. The Bike to School Day, where we start right down here at the firehouse and go up to Manor School in Cascade Canyon, sorry. This entire street was filled with bikes, and we should be that way more often.
Okay, Chris Lang.
Another huge question for me. What can we do to promote safe alternative transit? First thing we can do is redo the bike system we have here in town. People think it's good, but it's not really together. I single-handedly got a grant back in 1990 and set up the kiosk and got a map and worked out rules of road with police chief and posted them. We did make an effort. Now I've got another plan going on, but it hasn't really been implemented, which is one of the reasons I'm running for town council. And I know Center Boulevard looks good, but there's a lot more to it than that. Casual carpool sounds great. We did have a program where people in the valley would hitchhike, and I think that was worthy of making that work again, rather than just going to the San Francisco. Crosswalks, that's what Fairfax needs. Downtown Fairfax needs them. And I'm not getting much traction getting them done. So I figured if I run for town council, then people are going to have to listen when I say, "We need a crosswalk that goes between Farmer's Market and Sorrellas. We need a crosswalk that goes from the post office to the library." I mean, there's not crosswalks there, so.
Bill Madsen.
Yeah, and the reason that Chris and John are able to speak on this subject so thoroughly and so knowledgeably is because they ride their bikes everywhere, as I do myself. I've been riding my bike for years, running my errands around town. I was inspired by John Reed's example five or six years ago, when he was riding through the rain with his kid in tow. We have dropped the ball, however, on Sir Francis Drake recently, where they built the sidewalk between the library and Bothene Road. Because we didn't have enough money, they had to move the sidewalk four feet in from where it was supposed to be. They were supposed to be able to build a retaining wall. Well, because we didn't have enough council members riding their bikes in that direction, they didn't see what was happening. And what happened is we narrowed the bike lane on Sir Francis Drake towards a school so that the kids are riding in a bike lane that's four feet narrower than it was before. So I've lost my place. I only got five seconds, so thank you.
Okay, John Reed.
Okay, well, I love this question because I've been a bicycle pedestrian advocate for most of my life. Let me see. I think getting people out of their cars has really been my motivator there. And I think walking and riding your bike around, especially walking, is really the way you interact with your community. And you run into people you know, and it's great. Commuting is, you know, some people have to commute, and they can't telecommute or whatever, and that's a really good place to also build community because casual carpool, as Pam said, shouldn't be encouraged in a lot of ways. We can provide a place for people to pick up rides to places. You know, all it takes is a couple of signs and say, "Oh, pull over here." If, you know, somebody's standing by the sign, needs to go to the East Bay or San Francisco or wherever it is. I mean, I think that that would be a quick and easy way to facilitate that. I've also, there's 100 trails in the Fairfax Hills. A lot of those are, you can, instead of driving two miles, you can walk four blocks. We just need to fix the stairs. So, thank you.
David Weinshoff.
Yeah, we've settled for an inadequate, bare-bones county-wide bus service. If it was flexible, I think that you would see what happened when the kids started taking the buses a few years ago, when they were provided with low-cost options to get out of their parents' cars and begin to have a little independence and use the buses. It exploded. It was an unrivaled success, and most of those kids are still taking the bus today. I think we should not settle for the inadequacies of a transportation system that in other parts of the world has proven to be quite effective. I think we should revisit it here and make the public investment in it. As for the pedestrian disabled, it's an important issue, and Rose Tabor is not with us this evening and is not well. But for the longest time, she pressed us to think about the fact that our senior citizens, we are a green community, are having trouble on our sidewalkless parts of town and our inadequate sidewalks when they are there. We're going to have to find a way to address this on a neighborhood-by-neighborhood issue.
All right. The next question. Do you support incentives in the Fairfax contract with Marin Sanitary Services to help Fairfax move toward its adopted goal of getting to zero waste by 2020? And if so, what incentives do you support? And we start with you, Susan Brandburg.
Thank you. I've been working on the contract with Larry Bragman, and I don't think that we were talking about, I'm not sure what the question is, incentives for...
To reach zero waste. It says incentives, it doesn't become more specific than that. Do you support the incentives in the contract? Are you?
I know what she's talking about, but it isn't, I'm not sure that it's in our contract. At this moment, I don't have the contract in front of me.
Okay.
You mean that we would tell them they have to, I'm confused whether this is something that we're achieving or that we're going to tell them they have to achieve for us?
Oh, for, I see what you mean.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, Pam.
Okay, I'm having to talk about zero waste. I'm not sure what the incentives are either.
Okay.
I think the zero-waste resolution is a really important one, and it's one that absolutely needs action. I think that waste has been a big issue of Sustainable Fairfax. It's a very big sustainability issue. Our landfills are filling up. We've actually fought to not expand our landfills even further because of the amount of zero-waste initiatives that are in the county. And we need to create a closed-loop system. This means more than just recycling. It means composting. The other communities in the Bay Area who have found a way to do curbside composting, and I think that our contract needs to absolutely urge and insist that curbside composting either be piloted or begun in Fairfax, and that it be done sooner rather than later. I know we sort of threatened Marin Sanitary Service by looking at a townwide composter, and they immediately said, "No, no, no, this is something we're going to take care of." And I think that we should absolutely urge them to take care of it. And between 40% and 60% of our waste can be composted, and it absolutely should be done by Marin Sanitary Service.
Chris Lang.
Incentives in the contract for Marin Sanitary. I'm in favor of those incentives. Instead of, I served one year on the Fairfax Solid Waste Franchise Advisory Committee a few years ago. I've been deeply interested in recycling and waste management. I've been doing waste management at Fairfax Festival for 15 years, hands-on. The financial incentives are, you get a penalty if you don't perform according to the contract, the goal of the contract, and you get a reward if you do make it on time or before time. That's a financial incentive. I think we can do a better job recycling green waste. Throwing it on top of the dump doesn't really seem to me to be recycling. I think we can improve that by burning it or doing something with it. One of my pet dreams is to make merchants take back containers they sell. Of long drugstores selling motor oil, they should take back the empty jugs. They want to sell it, they should take it back. And we have to work with Marin Sanitary to demand the industry stop making containers aren't recyclable. That's Marin Sanitary's big beef, is regaining all this plastic that we can't recycle. They can't do it. That's what they say. So that's what we've got to work on. It's a political statewide type thing, but we can do it through the power of the pocketbook.
Bill Madsen.
As Pam said, there are other communities that are ahead of us on this, and I think Fairfax prides itself on being a green leader, and we're behind on this. So I think if I was on the council, yeah, I would definitely push forward to have the curbside composting and have us, you know, we can use these other communities as an example and find out what they're doing and put it into play. So why haven't we done it already, is the question when this is Fairfax. Thank you.
John Reed.
Yeah, it's an interesting question, why we haven't done it already. I mean, I think that our garbage contract has been going on about 15 years now, about how it was. And it's due to get renewed in 2012, and the Garberinos are looking to renew that early because they, you know, kind of want to say, "Oh, well, you know, we want to make sure we kept on getting this contract." But I think it's really important to make sure that that contract is a good one, that it does the right thing. And I think exactly, we need to look at examples by other communities, and we are behind on this, and zero waste is an excellent goal. You know, before I lived in Fairfax, I moved here in 91. I lived in the city of Berkeley, and they had an amazing program where they set a goal for themselves, something like 70% reduction, but they hit 80 several years before they wanted to hit 70. So it's definitely possible. And composting makes a lot of sense. I do it at home. Thanks.
Okay, David Weinshoff.
I have a little bit of a different approach on this. I don't think we should just throw it on Marin Sanitary. It's partly their responsibility, but I think the enemy is us. Turn the package over. If it says 3 through 7, don't buy it. Buy it in another package. Over time, in our society, the producers of the goods will change the packaging in which it arrives in so that we are not faced with the ridiculous balance of having to throw it on a sanitary service that can't seem to recycle all of the crap that we throw at them. I would say it's personal responsibility. It's our time to grab hold of this idea and say to the stores and the merchants, "We like the product, but it's going to have to arrive at our doorstep or at our, you know, at the store in a way that is more environmentally and ecologically conscious."
Okay, Wendy Baker.
Yeah, I agree. It is surprising that Marin doesn't have curbside composting, and my understanding is that there's a lawsuit sort of holding it up. The county had a plan to be at zero waste, I think it was 2015, I think you said 2012, and they wanted to move it back to 2025, and there's a group suing to get it back to 2012. So now everything is in limbo. 40% of our waste is food products, from what I understand. So we're talking about a huge amount of waste. I think curbside composting is the way to go, and we just have to work to get that lawsuit resolved.
All right. There are many county and regional boards and commissions on which town and city council members serve. This question or wonders, what issues need to be addressed beyond the local level on a county and a regional basis? And are there any issues that particularly interest you, where you would want to serve? And that is, we start with Pam.
Yeah, I mean, if it's not clear yet, the issues that are really important to me are certainly Marin Clean Energy. I think Lou Tremaine's doing a fabulous job on the Marin Energy Authority at this time. It's certainly something that I would absolutely love to spend time on as well. Solid waste is also interesting to me, and I think that, I know Larry Bragman has played an active role in speaking out to the Marin Municipal Water District on issues pertaining to water as well. And so those are certainly the areas that would be interesting to me, and the issues that I think are of the utmost importance for us to deal with, not just on a Fairfax level, but also on a county level.
Chris Lang.
County boards and commissions, what issues should be addressed beyond local ones? Well, I think water is really important. We're having a controversy about desalinization versus conservation, and I think we're actually probably going to need both, to tell you the truth. But without having all the facts, I'm not going to say I believe in this. Another one is transportation. Our biggest problem in Marin is, I think, is traffic calming and traffic congestion. We're trying to make Fairfax better for pedestrians and businesses. Traffic calming is our best bet, and there's a lot of little techniques we can use. So I'm hoping the staff is going to take this seriously. For me, it's bicycle transit. And the Transportation Authority of Marin has done a reasonably good job, but it's been a huge amount of work from people like Deb Hubsmith and the Bike Coalition, and it's problematic. The public works departments and the towns aren't really cooperating and aren't doing that good a job, in my opinion, just from the Golden Gate Bridge up to here and back. And there's lots of work to be done. So I would be very interested in serving on the Transportation Authority of Marin Board to help Steve Kinsey and Charles McGlashan make things better for cyclists and pedestrians at the same time. Thank you.
Bill Madsen.
Yeah, this is a very exciting time for cyclists. We have the 25 million from federal funding for the East-West Bike Corridor that Deb Hubsmith and the Coalition secured. I'd be very interested in sitting on that board. I bike commuted to the city for, this is a long time ago, about seven years ago, when I was still young and capable. And it was hard work, but Fairfax and San and Selmo were the worst places to ride a bike. And we need to have a say on how we can make improvements to make it easier to ride around here. Because of my background as a firefighter and paramedic, I'd be interested in serving on the Fire Board or the Paramedic Board. I have a unique insights and an understanding of how the system works that I could bring to that. Thank you.
John Reed.
Yeah, well, of course, I would also be interested in the Transportation Board. I am currently... I am currently Fairfax's representative on the east-west corridor to San Rafael to Fairfax, and basically what that body is doing is identifying all the problem points along that route, so it makes it easy for people to ride safely back and forth between those different municipalities. Right now, it works if you're really brave, and, you know, and only barely at that. And so we're identifying the problems and putting it together so we can, you know, it's shovel-ready for grants that come along to make that ready, because that's how much money there is to do. I think there are a lot of regional issues that I am interested in. For instance, water is huge. You know, I mean, the Fire Board, I'd probably leave more to fire people. But transportation, water, waste, communications, and, you know, grassroots stuff that people can do. Thank you.
David Wainsaw.
Yeah, I've been working over the past four years on Ross Valley wide issue. I was appointed to the Flood Zone 9, which, once the lawsuits are resolved, we'll be able to have a large sum of money to begin to address the unfortunately looming threat of flooding in the Ross Valley. Also, the Safe Roots to Schools program as the liaison, just watching this program just expand exponentially over the past four years, and just imagining what it'll end up being over the next four to 10 years. And finally, over the past couple of months, I've been co-chairing the countywide green building new standards program that's put together by San Rafael and guided by the business community. It's called BURST. And I think that we're gonna see in Fairfax over the next year is the adoption of new green building standards. It's gonna be an extraordinary advance in how our contractors and architects begin to advance the idea of green building unified throughout all of the county.
Wendy Baker.
When I served on the council previously, I was a member of the Legislative Committee, and one of the things I'm interested in is tracking the proposal to change the state budget requirement and get rid of the two-thirds rule. And in the past, it was a lot of fun to work with the local congressperson and senator and assembly person to keep our town informed. I'm also interested in transportation and helped launch a carpool commuter competition. And at that point, we won the grand award for Fairfax from the Metropolitan Transportation Commission. Unfortunately, it's hard to get people out of their cars. Shuttle buses are too expensive. Not enough people take the bus. Trolleys are fantastically wonderful, but expensive. And my focus is on electric cars, and I think we have to change the cars and not get people out of their cars, but change the cars.
Okay, Susan Brandburg.
Okay, well, I think that, I already serve on the county disaster council, and that's something that interests me, is preparation for emergencies. And I think it's very important, and I'm very interested in going, getting the Get Ready program into our neighborhoods in Fairfax to be ready for a disaster. I'm on the Legislative Committee for the Marin County Mayor's and Council Members, and we meet every month, and we discuss the legislation that is coming through the pipelines, and we also make recommendations to the full body, whether to support or not. So those are my interests, legislation. ABAG, I don't really want to be the representative to ABAG, but I certainly want to have more dialogue with ABAGs when it comes to our housing numbers. Thank you.
Candidates and Fairfax voters, we've been at this for an hour and a half now, and I wonder whether there would be any strong objection if we moved at this point, we've gone around nine times on the questions, whether there'd be any strong objection, even though there are many topics, as you can see, that we have not touched on yet. But would it be all right to move to the closing statements at this point? Would you all be grateful if we did?
Yes.
Okay, let's do that, and we will actually reverse the order, and we will start with, what's his name, David Wainsaw.
Yeah, what's his name? Maybe we should stay at it?
One, I think we've decided one minute, because if we do two minutes, that's another 15 minutes. And I'd appreciate it if everyone did not get up and go during the closing statement. David.
I've had the great pleasure to be walking through the towns, not particularly last weekend when it was well over 100 degrees, but generally. And what I'm finding is something extraordinary in our town, even in these remarkably stressful times. I'm finding, I don't know how, I've talked about it with a lot of people, it's this sense of people recognizing perhaps, or at least telling me or convincing to me, that this is an extraordinarily, an extraordinary place, an extraordinary place. I characterize it by, I think I try, I make it too trite when I say the jewel in the crown in Marin County. I'm just amazed by the spirit and the happiness of the people who have come here, as if they've traveled from a long place, even if they've spent years here or were born here, like so many, and understand what a remarkable town this is, and the obligation of this council and future council to make sure that this small-town character that's been mentioned over and over this evening is ensured in every decision that we make. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, John Reed.
All right. Hi. For over 15 years, I've been working with, make Fairfax an even better place. It's great. Through Safe Roots to Schools, General Plan Committee, Chair of the Fairfax Volunteers, I've also done a lot of things to help merchants solve their individual problems by thinking outside of the box. In 2005, I immediately stepped up to lead the efforts to respond to the flood that devastated our community. I believe it's important to build community and for people to have a say in the decision-making process. The best way to hear people's ideas is to provide the opportunity for them to speak and then to listen to what they have to say. And I listen to people, and I truly enjoy doing that. It's been great working out in town. I'm glad to say that I believe I have earned the respect of the town's officials and the town's staff for the work I've done in Fairfax, and I ask for your vote on November 3rd. It's been an honor and a pleasure serving our community, and I would welcome the opportunity to move forward with you as a member of your town council. Thank you.
Bill Madsen.
My name's Bill Madsen. I went too long on my opening, so I'll keep this short and sweet. Anything that you want to see done in this town, any of the great ideas that people have in this town, for us to be able to do them, we need to save some money. We need to be, if we want to float a tax measure to, like I said, purchase open space, restore the pavilion, put sidewalks in where we don't have sidewalks, we can't float a tax measure when we already have one on the books saying, "You have to save our town financially," because we're not operating. I've already lost it. It's late. Good night. Thank you.
Chris Lang.
Do I get his extra time?
I don't think so.
Okay, wait, don't start the clock yet. Wait. Okay, start the clock. Okay, you know, I've had a reputation in this town, and I want to apologize for that. And I quit drinking. I quit drinking, and I got into counseling, and you know what? It's really turned my life around. It's one of the reasons I'm running for town council. I feel that I'm really ready for this job, and I'm willing to do it. And I think the town council has some big challenges ahead, and I'm running a positive campaign. But if I thought I couldn't do a better job, I wouldn't run. Things like the Fair and Self Center, Marin Town and Country Club, traffic calming, flood prevention, the professionalism and protocols that staff follows, even things like voluntary term limits. I'm hearing a lot of things from my constituents. I want to thank some of the people here, like Whitney, for helping with the flood benefits, Scott Hoxstrasser for working at the school, Mark Squier, Rich Pedomani for working on the chamber. You know, we all have to work together, and I'm really proud to be up here with, the people have done so much for our town, have so many great dreams. You know, if I don't get elected to council, I'm gonna keep working, but it would sure make my job a lot easier.
Okay, Pam.
I want to thank everybody for being here tonight. I think one of the things that makes Fairfax this great town with so much character is, by all means, the people in it. And I look out and I see so many people who have been working so hard for so many years to keep Fairfax the way that it is, and I think that it would just be such an honor to follow in those footsteps and to continue the great work to keep us as a progressive town. I've been endorsed by the Sierra Club and the NWPC and the Marin Peace and Justice Coalition and Jared Huffman and Charles McGlashan, but most importantly, I've been endorsed by four out of the five seated council members, and I respect the entire council. I think they're doing a great job, and I think that I would love to join them, and I'll ask for your vote, and I appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
Susan Brandburg.
Right. I've lived in Fairfax for 35 years, raised my family here, started a business, as I mentioned. One of the best things, oh, I started volunteering before there really was a volunteer board. One of the best things about volunteering in Fairfax is getting to know the citizens, and the citizens are my political advisors. I do not believe in hiring political consultants. I am using a local business to do my printing and to keep my tax dollars in Fairfax. I'm proud of my service to Fairfax and ask that you give me another term, and I'd be honored if you would help me in my efforts. I'm endorsed by Supervisor Hal Brown, Senator Jared Huffman, Ross Valley firefighters, Local 1775 AFVL CIO, Fairfax Police Officers Association, Steve Warner, Ross Valley Fire Chief, retired, former mayor's Peter Aragoni, Sue Peterson, Steve Vanny, and Michael Guerangelli, endorsed by the National Women's Political Caucus, the Marin Independent Journal, and I have to stop now. I have a website, SusanForFairfax, thank you, dot org.
Wendy.
Well, it's been great being in this room again. It is a little nerve-wracking being on television, but I would like to also thank people for being here. I'd love to be able to bring my experience back to work for Fairfax. I contributed a lot in the past. I helped ban Styrofoam for the community. We did win a major transportation program award. I have great experience as a professional planner. I'd like to see changes at the country club, at the Albertson's Market. We didn't talk tonight about affordable housing, but it's actually something that does work in Fairfax in the right style. And I think we can continue thriving as a vibrant community and to be truly sustainable. We want to live within our means. We want to live within our means in the environment and in the economy as well.
Thank you very much. This has been a wonderful evening. Thank you to the audience for the questions, the council members for their wonderful behavior and good answers. I want to thank, I want to thank our president, Margie Eller, who has been the timekeeper tonight. Thanks to the Chamber of Commerce for putting this on. Pick up a flyer on your way out that tells when these will be cable cast, and also the ones that we're doing on Saturday in the New Media Center with the San Anselmo and San Rafael City Councils.
As election day approaches, voters will receive dozens of political mailers. While some ads will be in support of a particular candidate, many will simply sling mud. Negative political ads hurt democracy. They cause voters to give up on finding a good candidate.
Great, great. And these are our candidates.
They encourage emotional rather than reasoned voting.
I'd vote for anyone but that jerk.
And they discourage qualified candidates from even running.
Me? Are you kidding? With all this negative advertising?
What can you do? Seek out nonpartisan information, such as smartvoter.org. Be wary of attack ads, scare tactics, and innuendo. Consider who's paying for the ad, where they're from, and who benefits. Be a smart voter. Don't be duped by negative ads.